If you are in agreement, please indicate by saying I will. Thank you very much.
Yeah, next order of business is a discussion of the Board of Education roles and responsibilities. For this topic. Oh, I'm sorry. The next order of business is a roll call of the new board members of the Board of Education.
Yes, that's part of Robert's role of border since we were not able to call them. Role at the beginning of the meeting because we had three board members who had not yet been seated. We'll go ahead as our first official action is to just. Call the role of our new board and if as you would just. Say that you're here to acknowledge your attendance here at the meeting. So Mr. Ballant.
Here.
Mrs. Bitter. Mrs. Bitter, here. Mr. Commerford.
Here.
Dr. Steger, here, and Mrs. Weiss, here.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Seconded.
Mrs. Weber, can you please call the role?
Mrs. Weiss.
Aye.
Mr. Ballant.
Aye.
Mrs. Bitter.
Aye.
Mr. Commerford.
Aye.
And Dr. Steger.
Aye.
So our first discussion item is the Board of Education roles and responsibilities and Mrs. Weber has provided to the board. The detail but and has agreed to take us through each of the roles as well as the appointments. And. I would ask any of the returning board members if they want to add any color to the roles that you have had in the past, please feel free to do so as we go through these.
Thank you, Mr. Commerford. The. Two offices of the Board of Education, the President and the Vice President are two areas that we're going to ask for. Actually have elected election for those this evening. And then there are several appointments of the Board of Education as well that serve in really critical roles. And keeping the work done, doing work in between board meetings and keeping things moving. A lot of work with our with our school and community and keeping that liaison. With both the community and our and our schools really vibrant. So just going quickly through the the roles and responsibilities is to kind of give a flavor. For those of you particularly who are new to the board. To make sure that you have a good idea of what is entailed in in all of these different. Roles of the Board of Education as well as the time commitment that is involved with each of these different roles. First and foremost is the President of the Board of Education, and this is a critical role. One that I I work with this person all of the time. Key is that it's just they preside at the Board of Education meetings. Also very involved in agenda planning. Should we need a board spokesperson within the media? That's a role of this this position. It's often the person who coordinates the response to from the board to community inquiries. And this year has been a that's been a very critical role because we've had a lot of community input. Into our work. We have a community roundtable with the cities and municipalities and townships. Working through the the evaluation of the superintendent and the treasurer, which are the two positions that report directly to the board. They have served in the past on our Executive Advisory Council with our our business community. That is something that could probably be assigned by this position. And then executes agreements and contracts on behalf of the district. So it's a it's a, you know, probably in in normal times, it's about a six to eight hour a week job. It's one that requires being frequently on call, and I'm sure this year Mrs. Weiss would say I've put in a lot more time than that because I know. Her dedication to the job this year has been. Many, many weeks, it took a lot more time than that. So, but we're trying to think about it in typical terms. The Vice President primarily helps with agenda planning as well, and then serves as the backup to the Board President. It's about a two to three hour a week job with that agenda planning component. One of the most important jobs are committees of the Board of Education. I think really the only one that is actually a board committee is our Sycamore Advisory Commission. Which I I think I did see our our President of that group here this evening. It's a group that is community based and serves as kind of a. Communication group as well as doing a lot of important studies on different topics. For the Board of Education, providing input to the board on on potential improvements for how we do we do our work. That person attends the the meetings on a monthly basis. They work with the the leadership of that organization and the superintendent to determine the study topics. They work through recommending board approval of membership in that group. And then they provide a a monthly update at our Board of Education. Meeting and also facilitates making sure that we schedule some of their presentations for the board. The Audit Committee representative is a is a much less time commitment. It really they serve as the board liaison for our annual financial audit. And work with the Auditor of States team and then also work with me through that process. It typically occurs and most of that work occurs in the in the last two quarters of the of the calendar year. One committee that we have this year that I think maybe we had last year, but it's become more and more important. Is our always an Aviator Advisory Committee, which is a group that works with the Greater Cincinnati Foundation. For to help facilitate and to to approve and and work with them. For many of our fundraising activities that we have in place to support our bond issue. That is going to require here soon about a once a quarter meeting. So fairly fairly simple, but I think. It may also have some. Time commitment with continuing to work with the community and make sure they are aware. Of our fundraising needs and our hope is that even once we're done with the current bond issue. Group that if that committee may expand to provide other. Private funding support to a lot of the programs within the district. This year, probably the biggest and most impactful committee that we are going to have is our Policy Revision Representative. And this may be even one that as opposed to our typical having one board liaison. We might want to actually have two because of the work that we're going to be doing. This this person will work with the Treasurer Superintendent and the designees from our District Office Team and potentially our Administrative Team. We're working toward updating our entire board policy. Manual this year. Making sure that we're in line with state and federal legislative mandates, making sure that our policies reflect. The you know what our community wants our school to be. We do work with the Ohio School Boards Association as a resource for this work. And 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 that work's supposed to be done in the first six months of the year. So that's going to be probably a five hour a week. Job. And once we get that all done, I'm anticipating that it's going to be about five to 10 hours per quarter to maintain that work. That's going to be a big, big impactful job this year. And again, it might be something that we might want to think about having more than one person from the board on that team. The Master Facility Plan Executive Core Team, Mr. Ballant has served on that in the past. We meet now we're meeting monthly just to get updates on where we are with the construction and then also making sure that if there's board input, administration. Input, thinking about things like scheduling. If there's anything that we might need to discuss that would have impact on the neighbors to our construction projects that the board rep. Make sure that there's a board perspective within those meetings. They're typically virtual. So it's not something that you'd have to come to the office, but they do eat meat. Once a month for about for just a couple of hours, and we are trying to have some community meetings from time to time just to keep. Our community up to date on the progress of those of those projects. Our Legislative Liaison works with myself and Mr. Lewis primarily. To make sure we're keeping on top of education bills that are within the Ohio Legislature. Primarily, there is potentially some review of federal legislation as well, but it's mostly what happens at the Ohio State House. We work with the Ohio School Boards Association and the Alliance for High Quality Education to provide us information on on update. Current legislation. This person will provide a legislative update at our evening board meetings. We do try to meet a a couple of times a year with our legislators that represent the Sycamore Community Schools. And from time to time, when we see something of particular interest that we feel they need to either have. You know, proposed solution for a legislative issue. Or just need to know the the unintended consequences and size, I guess, how I'll put it on the Sycamore Schools. That they have that information as well. So. Not it it depends sometimes on the year when it says budget year, there can tend to be a lot of work in this area, but for the most part. It's keeping on top of the legislation as well as giving that monthly report. The Student Achievement Liaison. That has that work has been a little bit limited in the last couple of years because of COVID. And we got some restriction on building visitors, but but at its height, I think when when actually when Mrs. Weiss was. In this role, she did a great job of providing to going out, doing some very. You know, some visits in our buildings, finding out some of the key things they were working on. And important programming that that they were doing in their school and then would provide updates at the evening board meeting so that. The board had some ideas of some things that were going on within our buildings. And I think she at the time she tried to make a visit to at least one building. Per month and update so that all all of the buildings had been visited through the year. And then finally, this isn't one of the items that's listed, but the the intent of the board is to make sure that. You as a have a couple representatives to one PTO meeting per year. At each of the buildings. So that's really more, there's typically been a board member who has kind of scheduled, make sure that. Every every PTO has had a report and a visit by the board. But the intent is that all board members will kind of spread out that work and and go typically. One or two together and and provide just a good update on what's going happening at the. Board of Education level and at the district level, things that either haven't occurred or are things that are upcoming so that you just keep. In contact with our parent groups. So Mr. Commerford, hopefully that provided some information on each one of those groups, and I think that give a start to. Our board members and thinking through what roles they might be interested in.
Thank you, Mrs. Weber. Would Mr. Ballant or Mrs. Weiss like to add any color for the roles that you have served on?
Oh, color? Wow. And I think Mr. Ballant and I could talk for hours about most of these roles. Since I think we've served in quite a number of them. I don't I don't think I don't think so. I think Mrs. Weber did a great job.
Yeah, I would agree. Mrs. Weber did a fantastic job in the descriptions. You know, it's very hard to put a time commitment to any of these roles because they vary. You know, they're very frequently and and year to year as well. So. You know, the the two roles of President and Vice President can be the hours listed, or it could be. Two and three times that based on what's going on in the district and the community. So, you know, these are all very important roles. And certainly a commitment to being on the board. You know, as continued involvement in the community and in in the roles that are listed, so.
Dr. Seeger, Mrs. Better, do you have any questions on the roles that we could field?
No, thank you. No, thank you.
Okay, I did have one question that came up. For me was. We will, we have been working on the Strategic Action Plan and we had board assigned roles for the Strategic Action Plan. I. I think every board member had had taken a role. I don't know that it 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 comes to this. Level, but we had a point person from the board on the Strategic Action Plan. And what I wanted to check was, is that linked to one of these assignments or is that assigned? Independently and should we add that as a separate assignment? And I'm raising this up for my fellow board members for input.
Yeah, oh, I thought Chad you were going to speak. Um, I do believe that Mr. Mercurio filled that role for the board. He was integral in a lot of the strategic planning that went on. And then continued in that role. So I think that we need to consider that. I don't know if it's an official role that. We need to fill tonight. I it might be able to be absorbed under a under one of these roles as well. So I think that's something that we should probably discuss. Mr. Lewis, do you have any thoughts on that?
I was just going to say, based on. You know, some of the discussions that we've had about kind of refocusing, reenergizing, reorganizing the strategic plan. Not obviously changing any of the objectives or the goals, but really how we get there. That that might be something we would want to revisit when we come back to you with the kind of rebranded, reformatted, ready to go strategic plan.
I know Mr. Mercurio spent a lot of time really during the development of the plan, and now that it's been approved. It's probably going to be a different role, but I I think that we're looking at more of a, you know, a steering committee. But continuing also to report back to the board periodically on progress. So. I think we have probably a couple of different. Methods that we're going to use to make sure that the whole board is is aware of what's happening, what's coming up. What's been completed, but it probably would be a good idea to have some board representation on that steering committee, but we can come back and think about how we might want to do that.
Yeah, I think it would it would be a good idea to revisit that once we 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 get around back to the strategic plan. So I would be in favor of not tonight necessarily assigning it to somebody. Revisiting and discussing where we are as a board and talking about that. Once we know more of what that would entail, what that would involve, we can have that discussion.
I actually now have a question. Talk, we're talking outside of the list that we have here on the agenda. Can we also have the same question regarding the DART team? I know that Mr. Mercurio was also a representative on that team as well, and will we have a district? Board member on that as well?
I think that's an advisory group to the superintendent, so I think that would be in her in his realm to decide that.
The clarification here is that the DART team was not a board sponsored. It was not a, it's not a board.
Committee.
Committee. And it's at the discretion of the superintendent.
Okay, and then the the Strategic Action Plan was a committee.
It it was really led by the superintendent as well, but we did have board representation while we were. Working through the. Through the development of the plan. So it was really more so we had a board member informed, but again, I I think that's something we can come back and and determine whether someone on our strategic plan. Oh, I'm trying to remember what we called it is that this Oversight Committee or.
We had a steering team that, you know, again, was going to meet and really discuss the progress of the plan prior to bringing it back to the board and then. We did have board members assigned to each of the project teams more of as a liaison between like each group and a board member. You know, we have not yet had to engage you as board members in those groups and. Really and truly, you know, our work continues to get sidetracked with all the other things that we're trying to get through. Just to keep our heads above water. So as much as I, you know, I asked my colleagues this week, I said. You know, I feel like, you know, from a strategic plan standpoint, we're not getting to where we want to be. And they said. Give yourself some grace. We're really, we're all struggling to keep up with the demands of our jobs plus. You know, the extra things that we've been given because of, you know, Health Department regulations, reporting regulations. Things that we now have to do that we did not have to do. So, you know, we're we're trying our best to keep things moving while not falling apart. So. My answer would be, yes, we would like to have representation when we get it reformatted, restructured, ready to go. Because there were some things that I think overall that are good about our strategic plan, and then there's things that we just need to clarify and and bring. Back to you that'll be better. And I think then we can have a more. Robust discussion, a deeper discussion with you about what do we need from a board standpoint. From a dark team standpoint, I I think Mr. Mercurio more served in a. Data role than more of a board role. So, you know, he, you know, I have spoken to him just about is he, would he be willing to still update the data in the dashboard that he does without? Participating on the team and and he confirmed that he would still do that and send that information directly to me. So. As long as no one on the board has an issue with that, obviously, he and I will. Work together on the data's part, but I will be the one presenting it to the team each week when we meet. But, you know, at a certain point, you know, if our data gets to a point where we're very low and we may not need to be. You know, we've pulled some of these people out of their professional lives for a better part of two years. To really help us every week and give us their input and bounce ideas off of. And. My hope is that at some point we can get back to normal where we're not having to meet at all. But, you know, we're not there yet. So from a board standpoint, I don't know that there would be a. Something that I would need the input of one board member versus coming back to you and kind of giving you all five. Updates on on what's going on with our dark team or our recommendations.
Thanks, Mr. Lewis. So I I think in summary, we're going to assign the roles that were listed on the agenda. And the additional ones that may come up as it's related to the Strategic Action Plan and others. There will be more work to do and and we will gladly sign and raise our hands when those come. Okay. Next order of business is the election of officers. So at this point, I'm asked going to seek nominations for the Office of Vice President of the Board of Education.
Mr. Commerford. It is with great pleasure that I nominate you for Vice President of Sycamore Community School Board. You joined the board two years ago in January of 2020. We had the pleasure of going to OSBA together. And I remember driving up with you and just giving you. School Board 101 on the drive up to Columbus. And who would have thought that a mere two months later, we would have been hit with COVID-19 and we were all on this board. Challenged and you rose to the occasion. You have been such a fabulous contributor to this board. It has been a pleasure working with you, and I think that one of the things that Sycamore has done. Over the course of many years, at least the six years that I've been here, is we really try to. Have. Board members. Go through the process of becoming Vice President and then President and kind of keeping that education going forward. I think it you will serve very well in the role, and I hope that you consider accepting.
Thank you for your kind words, Mrs. Weiss. Is there a second to the nomination?
I second the nomination.
Thank you, Mr. Ballant. I will accept the nomination. Are there any other nominations for the Office of Vice President? Hearing none. Mrs. Weber, could you please call the role?
Mrs. Weiss.
Aye.
Mr. Ballant.
Aye.
Mr. Commerford.
Aye.
Dr. Steger.
Aye.
And Mrs. Bitter.
Aye. Congratulations.
Thank you. Next, I would like to ask for nominations for the Office of President of the Board of Education.
I would like to have a motion to have Paul Ballant be the President. Second.
Thank you for the nomination. I accept the nomination pending vote, of course. And look forward to serving, you know, the the district, the community. And working with the five of or the four of you plus myself and really taking this district forward and continuing the great things that are going on in this district.
Thank you, Mr. Ballant. Mrs. Weber, could you please call the role?
Mrs. Bitter. Aye. Dr. Steger.
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss.
Aye.
Mr. Ballant.
Aye.
And Mr. Commerford.
Aye.
Before we do the oath of office for the officers, I would like to take a moment to thank. And Mrs. Weiss for her two years of service as the School Board President. On what I would say has to be two of the most. Heavy and tumultuous years to lead a board of education. Not only have we had the Master Facility Plan coming to life and the the stewardship of the $127 million of construction projects. Under your watch. And we had the search for a new superintendent under your watch. We also had the management of the school district through all of the COVID unknowns and protocols and. And I'll just say extreme passion from our community to have. What's best for their students from health and safety and education standpoint. And I. I've found that you rose to the occasion and really kept the board together. As a unit, and I wanted to thank you personally and congratulate you for your service to this district in that capacity.
Well, Mr. Commerford, thank you very much for your kind words, but I will tell you that. Being on a school board is definitely a group activity. And I don't kid myself to think that being in the role of President or Vice President. Makes it that you're doing more work. This is a team effort and everyone sitting. Here and sitting out there, we are a team and it is really important to operate that way. So it's been my pleasure to serve this district. I did not imagine those being the two years that I would serve. I could not have predicted that, but it has been my pleasure. Thank you.
I think we need to.
I'm sorry.
Oath of office, and I can administer that to Mr. Ballant.
Is it, is it going to be you, Beth?
Let's come up to the front and we'll.
Okay.
That way Mrs. Ed can get a picture. All right. This is going to be very similar to the oath that you heard earlier, yes, president and vice president. So if you'd raise your right hand and I will read the oath of office. And if you have any, you can say I will. Realizing the power vested in the office that you enjoy and understanding that the citizens of the Sycamore Community Schools have placed in you a committed trust. I ask that you accept the responsibility of your office for the duration of your term and that you provide the quality of leadership, the pride of commitment and the sensitivity of fellowship and integrity to your office. I further ask that you affirm your support of the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Ohio and agree to faithfully and impartially discharge your duties as members of the Board of Education of the Sycamore Community School District to the best of your ability and in accordance with the laws now in effect and hereafter to be enacted during your continuance in said office. If you are in agreement, please indicate by saying I will. Thank you.
At this point, the new president will preside.
Thank you, Mr. Commerford. You know, first, we're going to continue our conversation on the Board of Education appointments and discuss who has interest in each position. And then after we have that discussion and agreement, we'll actually take a vote on them. So the first one being legislative liaison. Who on the board has interest in being on legislative liaison?
I've expressed interest in, in being the legislative liaison. It's one of the positions that I've never had being for six years. So I, I'm excited to throw my hat in the ring for that.
Okay, anybody else be interested?
I have an interest, but I, I think that this would be a good role for you, Melissa. So I will be happy to defer on this one, maybe another year.
Yeah, there will be plenty of time for all of us to be on, on all these positions. So, so trust me, if you're, if you're not this year, there's, there's next year and plenty of other years. You know, and, and keep in mind, as we go through these, we want to make sure they're evenly distributed. We don't want one person to have four or five and another person only to have one. Next was student achievement liaison.
I have interest in that one.
I'm also, I've also expressed interest in that. I think that this, as Mrs. Weber indicated, it's been very difficult in the last two years to actually get into buildings and really kind of see what our amazing teachers and students are doing. I also think that this actual position should be kind of expanded to include kind of just academic excellence in general. We have a lot of things also in our strategic plan, obviously, that are related to achievement. And I think that this might be a really good role to do some pairing up of board members. So I can kind of just show Dr. Steger potentially like how I've done it, what things are that we look at and kind of transition that so in the next year or in six months, she could take over that role. I would, I think that might be a really nice opportunity.
Yeah, there is no, correct me if I'm wrong, Mrs. Weber, there's no set, there's nothing set that says only one board member can do these. There's obviously, we can't have three because that would entail it to be a board meeting. The other thing that I would say about the, the student achievement liaison, you know, we, we, Mrs. Weiss has done a great job pre-COVID doing this, but I think this is also a committee that I would like to see us maybe revamp a little bit and, and, and learn a little bit more. When I was up at, or when, when we were up at OSBA conference, one of the meetings that I went to was about student achievement. And, you know, there's a, there's a lot of stuff that OSBA does with student achievement and maybe learn a little bit more from OSBA, what other districts are doing and, and, and I'll say just revamp ours a little bit. So maybe that's something that, you know, the two of you can work on as well.
I like the idea of pairing that up.
I like the idea of pairing that up as a new person on the board.
Now, the next two that we get into are really exciting ones, so I hope everybody doesn't jump at the same time. Policy revision representative. And as, as Mrs. Weber pointed out, you know, the next five months, I think she said five months, six months, are going to be some heavy lifting with this as we go through our whole policy. This may be one as well that Mr. Commerford has done a great job getting us to where we are today. And it might not be the most appropriate time to do a complete handoff since we're in the middle of this. You know, maybe this is also another one where we pair up with the new board member. So who has interest?
I have an interest in this one, actually, a real interest. So even though I know you, you're all just jumping for this one.
I will, let me just say one thing about policy and audit. I, I think that just, I think the three of us that are sitting that are, Mr. Ballant, Mr. Commerford and myself, I think we've all done those two, right?
Yep.
It's a really good, I know it sounds kind of dry, but it's actually a really good way to kind of learn more about the district. That's all I'll say about it. I did it for two years, I think.
I have.
I wasn't joking when I said I really am interested. No, I mean, I, I do think I would like that.
I have, I have done policy for two years, but I have not done audit. So I would be more than happy to do audit if, if no one else wants to do that. But I think Sarah had indicated that she might want to do audit as well. So I, I, I think policy is a, you know, I think policy is a great one as a new board member to take on. So thank you, Sarah, for that.
And you can take on audit. I, I'm fine doing policy and audit.
So maybe I would prefer to do instead than audit, Paul, in that regard. And maybe we can get a second person on, on policy other than Sarah or you could take the heavy load.
And I feel, I feel okay taking that load because that would, might be the only one that I'm doing.
Okay.
You know, if, if the need arises, I'll be happy to help. Let's leave your name on it for now, but certainly if it becomes too much, please reach out and, and I'll be happy to jump in and help.
And.
I will just add that this is going to be one that much like the strategic plan work, we're going to have frequent updates with the board and review as we get through that process. So you'll still all really get to be involved in this very exciting work.
And, and I will definitely, Mrs. Bitter, I will definitely spend time on transition on this one with you. So I won't, I won't leave you with no handoff on this one. We, we've instituted, instead of doing the normal year-on-year policy changes, we're actually doing a review of all of the policies at once to make sure we're compliant with Ohio revised code revisions that have occurred over time. We expect that they should be, but we know after a certain amount of time that there could be misses and gaps that have occurred. So we actually have hired OSBA, as Mrs. Weber has indicated. And so we, this is an important year for policy. So it's tremendous for you to take that.
Great. Moving on to, I guess we already decided on audit, that would be Mr. Commerford. Anybody else have an interest in audit? Sycamore Advisory Commission representative. I know Mr. Commerford is currently doing it.
I'm interested in that one. I might need a transition if I'm the only one interested.
Yeah, this is one where, because it runs school year, school year, when I took it on, I was originally shadowing Mrs. Adamac in this role. And then I learned it and then I took it for the next year. So what I would suggest is that because we've already started the committee work under the leadership of Mrs. Rapp, that what I would propose is that we, you, you join for the remainder of the year. And then in, in next calendar or next school calendar year that you could take that as a, on your, on your own. So if that's amenable to you, I would be fine with that. I just don't want to drop the, the team mid-year. And so I think we could shadow.
I can do that.
Shadow would be good.
I agree with that.
It sounds like a plan. Master Facility Planning Executive Core Team. I have an interest in continuing in this. I've been involved in it, you know, even before we went to broke ground. So it's something that, that I do have an interest in continuing in. In the, in the past, we've had Mrs. Weiss on it as well. So it, it is another committee where we could have two people if anybody else is interested in.
I'd be willing to serve as your subs, your backup if you can't make a meeting. How about that?
There you go.
All right.
And then the next one is the Greater Cincinnati Foundation, always an aviator advisory.
I would be interested in serving on that. I, I do have some foundation experience. And I know that that's something that's kind of, we didn't have a lot of activity on that last year, but I think is hopefully, fingers crossed, we start coming out of COVID a little bit more. I think that that will become more, more relevant.
I also have an interest in it, however, I'm going to defer to Mrs. Weiss based on my other commitments on the board. Any, anybody else have an interest?
Maybe not of interest, but maybe a comment. The, the Sycamore Advisory Committee is working on some foundation topic in one of the committees. So what I would, what I would extend is that, that is a particular one, Mrs. Weiss, if you're going to take on, that we make sure that we connect you with the, the committee on the advisory committee that's working on. They're really looking for making an actionable plan on this work. So this may grow in, in its purpose.
Great. That sounds like a great idea.
And then the last one, the Great Oaks representative, Steve, Steve Burke is, is our current representative. And he has agreed to continue in that role. So I need a motion for the Board of Education appointments.
So moved.
Second.
And just to make sure we're all on the same page, we have Mrs. Weiss as legislative liaison, Mrs. Weiss and Dr. Stegers as student achievement liaison, Mrs. Bitter as policy revision representative, Mr. Commerford as audit committee representative, Mr. Commerford and Dr. Stegers as Sycamore Advisory Commission representatives, myself and Mrs. Weiss as master facility plan executive core team, Greater Cincinnati Foundation, always an aviator, Mrs. Weiss and Great Oaks representative, Mr. Burke. Mrs., if there's no questions, Mrs. Weber, can you call the roll?
Mr. Commerford?
Aye.
Mrs. Bitter?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Mr. Ballant?
Aye.
And Dr. Steger?
Aye.
Motion passes. I need a motion for the approval of the fiscal 2023 tax budget.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Weber?
Yeah, let's give a, a quick presentation on the, the tax budget. We did have a tax budget hearing prior to our board meeting this evening. It would provide an opportunity for public comment on the tax budget itself. Just provided some updates on the, the purpose of the, of the tax budget, so on and so forth. So Mr., first, if you could go to the next slide. The tax budget is a document that has to be approved on an annual basis by the Hamilton County Budget Commission, which is a, a team that is made up of the Hamilton County Auditor, the Hamilton County Treasurer and the Hamilton County Prosecuting Attorney. They provide really a focus on our fiscal year 2223, which would be the upcoming school year, not the current school year. And it's provide, provided or is a, a kind of the foundation that they utilize to make sure that they are collecting appropriate taxes for the Sycamore Community Schools. It does not, however, provide any kind of spending authority to the district. It is really only just a document that the county uses to make sure that they can support the collection of property taxes for the district. Mr., first, if you could go to the next slide. Okay. This, actually, I think it went too far. Okay, thank you so much. They really do look at two different funds for the school district. The two that are actually, that taxes are collected on the, on behalf of the district. So one is our general operating fund, which is for the day-to-day operations of the district. The information that is provided within the tax budget is the district's five-year forecast that the board approves and reviews twice a year. It does provide a long-term outlook for the county to be able to make sure that those taxes that are collected are not only potentially used for this year, but for future years as needed. They are going to, however, focus on fiscal year 2023 as they look at that document this year. It does provide supporting schedules within the five-year forecast that gives the county the additional information it needs for not just the tax revenue that we receive, but also for state funding that we receive as well as funding from other state and local sources. They also, and probably the most important reason that the county needs this document is to be able to make sure that they collect the appropriate amount of, of real estate taxes to make sure we're paying off our bond issues. The district currently has three in place. One that provided improvements to the district in, back in 1998. It was a district-wide bond issue. In 2010, it actually funded the construction of the building that we're in right now here at Maple Dale. And then I think we're all familiar out in our audience with our 2019 bond issue that is doing significant improvements throughout the district. We do also provide information on a couple of bond issues that are utilized, that are not paid for with taxes. We have some energy conservation debt that we issued that was used to update our HVAC systems, such as so on and so forth. And we've been able to repay the debt on those with the energy savings that has been generated by those improvements. Back at the same time that we built Maple Dale, we also issued something called certificates of participation for utilization to, to build our district office that's here on the same site. And then we have a small amount of bonded debt that we use to replace the all-weather turf at, at the high school. So Mr. Fritz can go on the next slide. One of the other things that we typically inform our community and our Board of Education as we're looking at our tax budget is that we have just, we are getting ready to have our community pay their new tax bills. Your property values have just been reviewed this past year. And for the vast majority of people in our district, there was no change. It wasn't a, what's called either a triennial update year or reappraisal year by the county auditor. For most people, your, your taxes or tax values stayed exactly the same. Changes might have been if you put an addition on your house or something like that or made significant improvements. But for the most part, there were no changes. Tax bills probably have already gone out and you, either your mortgage company has paid those on your behalf. Or if you have your house paid for, you may have, have paid those directly to the, the county treasurer. Those bills, though, however, are based on the tax values in place for the 2021 calendar year. In Sycamore, we are really, really blessed. We have a very diverse tax base that has great residential properties and, and opportunities in, in our community. But we also have a very significant business tax base, which also helps to pay for everything that we get for our kids, for our staff, and then have really been integral in us being able to make sure that we can keep our facilities the way that they are at a very low tax rate. So we have a total of about 2.1 billion in total appraised value of all of our residential, commercial, industrial values across the district. I will tell you though, we informed the board before we are at the tax budget hearing is that in 2021, our property values district-wide did decrease by about 10 million. And if you think about that, much of it was related to COVID. The way that, that those values can actually be adjusted in with. The way that, that those values can actually be adjusted in with throughout the year and a, in a non-reappraisal year is that there's something called the Board of Revision that operates at the county level. And if a property owner feels that their, their property is overvalued, they can potentially get a reduction in overall value of their property. For those of you watching the real estate market, that didn't happen this year because home prices are on fire. We're continuing to see increases in our, our new construction in the district. So that wasn't where it occurred. But where it did occur was in many of our commercial and industrial areas. And if you think about that, some of the big sectors that were hurt within our community were the hotel sectors. You know, you think about the city of Blue Ash, they have many hotels. They're not really built for the tourist trade. They are to support our corporate corporate citizens within our, our district. They've really taken, taken a hit and their property value is based to some extent on their ability to generate revenue. The other thing is our, you know, you think of our office sector. A lot of people are no longer going to the office. It's a, a, a more difficult in many ways for the developers to be able to continue to get the kinds of rents and things like that on their office facilities. Really, we haven't seen as much of that. And you're starting to see that sector come back. But for 2021, many of those property owners went to the Board of Revision and asked for reduction in their property values. And they were granted because of the circumstances behind that. So overall, 10 million out of a $2.1 billion tax base, given what, what could have been with the economic climate this year, we feel pretty good about that being the, the outcome. And we look for many of those areas to bounce back in the future years. Overall, if you can go back, Mr. Fritz, let's talk about that. Overall, our residential values actually went up by about 16 and a half million. And when you think about a community that's considered built out, that's, that's a pretty good thing to have happening. And that was really just based on new construction, primarily in the Summit Park area. Reserves at Summit Park, which I think many of you may be aware of, that's kind of in the northernmost part of the district, as well as some areas in Montgomery with continued tear-down rebuild and a few other areas of new construction. So that's still an area that is surprisingly growing given, given the, in not a lot of available land for that to happen. But the commercial and industrial and public utility values did decrease because of that Board of, of Revision opportunity, as well as some of that commercial property just being reclassified into tax-exempt or tipped property, which is, for an example, if you think about the Vintage Club area, some of the new development that's going on in the front of that, that is all under a tax increment financing agreement with Sims Township, or actually with the City of Montgomery. So as opposed to pulling in a real estate taxes, the city is paying us in lieu of taxes for that. So some of this loss is actually being replaced by other, other revenue. So overall, again, thinking about what could have been, it's actually been a fairly light reduction in overall property values based on, based on the evaluation by the county. They, we're going to talk a little bit about tax rates that are levied based on those property values. So Mr. Fritz, we go to the next slide. The thing that has impacted our tax rate this year is the amount of taxes that need to be collected to pay for our bond issues. Are, those rates are set by the county auditor each year to make sure that they're collecting enough funding for us to pay our bond principal and interest payment requirements. You, many of you may be surprised because you would think, hey, you know, we just passed this bond issue, we'd think that that rate would be going up. But for those of you, Mrs. Rapp for sure, you know, who are heavily involved in getting that bond issue passed, we really tried to structure that debt coming in so that it would remain very flat. Some of our old debts coming off of the books while the new debt was coming on. So we're actually seeing, realizing about a quarter mil reduction in total bond retirement to be charged for 2022. We are increasing the amount that we are collecting for the 2019 bond issue, but the 20, or the 1998 bond issue needs much less taxes to be able to, to pay those, make those debt payments. We are anticipating that this, the 2023 calendar year, which is what the tax, tax budget represents, that we'll be able to remain at, at four mils, which is right in line with what we promised to the community. Mr. Fritz, go on the next slide. Overall, we always look at our residential tax millage and how it compares to other schools in the area. We're collecting about almost 35 mils. It's down a little bit because of that change in bond millage that we need to collect. So very much in line with what our community was paying in residential taxes in prior years. So Mr. Fritz, you go on the next slide. Sycamore, you know, continues to, because of that very diverse and rich tax base that I talked about earlier, we still rank 21st of 25 of all the school districts in both Hamilton County. And we always also look at our neighboring districts of Mason and Kings. So we're fifth lowest in our comparison group. Mr. Fritz, if you go to the next slide. And so just to, to see that more in a, more of a visual, visual format, you see Sycamore down there at the very bottom. The school districts in Hamilton County range anywhere from Finney Town, which their residents pay over 60 mils of property taxes, down to Southwest Schools, which pays right around 25 mils, but also pays an income, has an income tax to support their schools. We're well below that average and continue to, to really compare well within our, our compare, that comparison group. Our next steps are, at the conclusion of this presentation, I hope that the board will approve the tax budget, which will allow me to present it and file it with the county auditor's office. It'll then be reviewed by the Hamilton County Budget Commission, who will utilize that to help determine tax rates for, for this upcoming year. Finally, once we have that information back, really the next step for the board in terms of determining the budget for next year is approval of the appropriation resolution that will occur in June. That's when we'll actually have spending authority approved. So with that, are there any questions from the board on the tax budget?
There's no questions. Mrs. Weber, call the roll, please.
We're ready for a vote? Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Dr. Steger?
Aye.
Mr. Ballant?
Aye.
Mrs. Bitter?
Aye.
And Mr. Commerford?
Aye.
Motion passes. I need a motion for the approval of the performance bonds. So moved.
Second.
Okay. The county auditor and Ohio Revised Code requires that the district provide performance bonds, both for me as the treasurer, as well as the board president and superintendent. So once approved, there's really not any kind of official guidance as to what the amounts of those performance funds should be, just that we have them and that we file them with the county auditor on an annual basis.
Any questions from the board? Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Dr. Steger?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Mrs. Bitter?
Aye.
Mr. Commerford?
Aye.
And Mr. Ballant?
Aye. Motion passes. I need a motion for the resolution approving standing authorizations.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. This is something that is new that we're requesting for the board, board's approval. With Miss, or Dr. Davis coming to the district as HR director, one of the things that she recommended that she's utilized in, in other districts is some opportunity to authorize the superintendent in, in certain circumstances when we have either a long gaps of time between board meetings, to be able to either provide a kind of a contingent employment, as well as accept resignations to keep things moving in, in between board meetings until the board can actually officially approve employment. I think that, you know, thinking about the, the the challenges right now of being able to make sure that when we need to employ people, we can do it quickly just because of challenges within the workforce. And also, when you have someone who's really talented, you want to be able to make sure that you can, you can provide an offer of employment potentially before the board can, board convenes to approve it. In terms of salary and those types of things, we do have standardized salary schedules that guide much of the employment recommendation in terms of the compensation that's included with those. The other thing that has, is a recommendation by the state auditor's office that came about as part of our annual audit, is that they've asked that the board authorize the treasurer to be able to invest in commercial paper per the guidelines of Ohio Revised Code. We do have board policy that would authorize this, but they've asked the board to take an additional step to allow this to occur. I will point out that there are a couple requirements within the, the code that have to be fulfilled in order for this to move forward. One is that the, the treasurer of the district, I had to go through some special training just to know some of the, the risks and of, of commercial paper instead of maybe some government-backed securities. So that's one thing. There's also, it has to be one of the highest grades of commercial paper in order for us to invest district funds in, in this, as well as making sure that it's, there's a limited amount of our portfolio that can be invested in commercial paper. So we've met all of those requirements. The, the auditor has just asked that we, is that the board actually approved specifically the investment in commercial paper above and beyond what's already in our policy. So hopefully I covered what you needed, Dr. Davis, and I don't know if the board has any other questions.
I have a quick, I have a question. How, can you just, being new to the board, can you explain the process a little bit from the employment perspective for personnel? What would have happened up until now? What would be the change exactly?
Up until now, and maybe Mr. Lewis can, can talk about this or Dr. Davis, but.
Hello. Up until now, we would have to wait until a board meeting before we could secure a hire. This would allow us to provide early authorization. So if we were in our peak hiring season where people are looking at multiple offers, it will allow us to solidify and close the deal, so to speak, prior to the board meeting, so that we can go ahead and secure that hire before they would accept the other job. Because most individuals that are coming to a school district, they want to see their name on the agenda before they turn in their resignation. And this would allow us to give them confirmation that the superintendent has accepted their hire.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And then I have one more question.
Sure.
Not related, for, for letter C, so it's not, not related to human resources. Can you just elaborate on that one? On what revised code is that you're referencing there?
Right.
I just feel like I need to know more about that one.
Okay. Just to, the district has used some commercial paper in, aligned with Ohio Revised Code, primarily for our construction funds that we have right now, and not all of them. I mean, there's a, there's a limit to the amount of the total portfolio that can be utilized. Again, our, our board policy basically provides authorization to invest funds in anything that's covered by Ohio Revised Code, which commercial paper would be one of them within those certain guidelines, i.e. that I have, I've been able to complete the training, which is something that is provided in, in terms of evidence to our count, or to the state auditor's office, and that within only certain amounts. And I think probably most importantly, that it is a high, the highest grade of commercial paper so that it's been rated by the rating agencies and is considered to be, you know, a fairly risk-free investment for the district. So I think that's probably the most important piece of it. If it's not in that high investment grade, that would also be something that, that the district could not invest in. Commercial paper is a pretty short-term kind of investment. It turns around fairly quickly. Right now, it's one of the few things that you can actually get a little bit of investment return on, given the state of the economy. So it's something that we've been utilizing within our portfolio for with, with our construction, construction dollars.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thanks. Yeah. The, the other thing that I would point out is, and I, we did this probably, I'm trying to think, maybe spring sometime or it's fall, is that I do provide a report to the board on an annual basis. That's another requirement that just shows what commercial paper we've invested in throughout the year and what the return on it was. So that happens as part of one of our, our monthly financial reports.
Any additional questions from the board? Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Mr. Commerford?
Aye.
Dr. Steger?
Aye.
Mr. Ballant?
Aye.
And Mrs. Bitter?
Aye.
Motion passes. I need a motion for the approval of the 2022 board meeting schedule.
So moved. Second.
Any questions, comments? This is, I think, the second time we've looked at it and discussed it, so.
I, I would just point out that it's our typical schedule, the first and third Wednesday typically, with a few exceptions, one being the March 23rd board meeting, because that falls within spring break. So we've moved it to the, the fourth Wednesday of the month. October 12th falls in line with one of the Jewish holidays. If it would have been the first Wednesday in October, so we've moved it to the second Wednesday in October. And then we have included on March 2nd that that will be a little bit long, that'll be a longer meeting because we're going to pair a regular business meeting with a retreat on finances and, and some other updates. And then in October 28th, which is, I believe, a workday for staff, we're hoping to have our second retreat of the year that really is more of our overall academic update for the year. So I will point out that for each one of our, our evening meetings where we typically have executive session prior to the meeting, the timeframe is really to be determined. And we announce that as part of our board packet and, and to our community so that they know what time executive session begins prior to the meeting. So that'll be determined at each one. We'll continue, though, with the practice that the regular business meeting will continue to start at 7:00 PM.
Great. Thank you very much. Mrs. Weber, would you please call the roll?
Dr. Steger?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Mr. Ballant?
Aye.
Mrs. Bitter?
Aye.
And Mr. Commerford?
Aye.
Motion passes. I need a motion for the approval of the 2022 memberships.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. These are all memberships that we have had in the past. And I believe most of the, the cost of those memberships are fairly similar to what they have been in prior years. OSBA has served primarily as a, an organization that we've utilized for lobbying efforts. But I think also they've really done a lot of work with us in board development. We attend their annual conference, but we've also worked with them on other board development activities. They are currently working with us on our policy revision by additional contract. And we have participated in a workers' compensation. participated in a workers' compensation group rating program through them that has also saved the district some significant dollars. And this year, we actually are taking advantage. We, they have provided some assistance through their legal assistance fund, which is the first time that that has happened, but it's been a definite advantage or benefit to be involved in that. The Alliance for High Quality Education and the Ohio Education Policy Institute are both groups that have helped us with some of our lobbying efforts and also with research that's needed to help with supportive legislation. And then we have been involved in both our Blue Ash Business Association and our Montgomery Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you, Mrs. Weber. Any questions from the board? Mrs. Weber, please call the rule.
Mr. Commerford.
I.
Mrs. Weiss.
I.
Mr. Ballant.
I.
Mrs. Bitter.
I.
Dr. Steger.
I.
Motion passes. That will adjourn adjourn the organizational meeting. And we will move right into our regularly scheduled business meeting. I need a motion for the approval of the agenda for the regular meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Oh, Mr. Ballant, that also includes the addendum, correct?
Oh, yeah, thank you. I'm out of practice. I have it. I do have it, yes. And that would include the addendum Personnel Consent Agenda 1, E, F, G, and H, 3, A, B, C, and D, and 4A. Thank you, Mrs. Weiss.
So moved, or wait, Mr. Commerford, did you, I think you said it right.
I think Dr. Dr. Steger made the motion. You are okay with that revision?
All right.
Mrs. Weber, please call the rule.
Dr. Steger.
I.
Mr. Commerford.
I.
Mr. Ballant.
I.
Mrs. Bitter.
I.
And Mrs. Weiss.
I.
Motion passes. I need a motion for the approval of the minutes.
I moved.
Second.
Any corrections, updates, comments on the minutes? Mrs. Weber, please call the rule.
Mrs. Weiss.
Hi.
Dr. Steger.
Hi.
Mrs. Bitter. Mr. Commerford.
I.
And Mr. Ballant.
I. Motion passes. Moving on to the public participation section of our meeting, we do have one participation. Jess Button, if you would please come forward. Miss Button, per our board policy, you do have three minutes. I'm not going to be exact on that three minutes, but you know, please keep it close. So please state your address and then go ahead and start.
My address is 4772 Alpine Avenue in Blue Ash. All right. So good evening. I hope you're all well and your New Year's been off to a great start. I want to share my thoughts about the video that was sent out on December 15th regarding the potential threat of violence at the schools. I appreciate that the district acted quickly and that the matters like this are taken seriously. I also appreciate that the district worked with the Blue Ash Police Department to ensure the safety of our students. My husband and I both sat down and watched the video together. In a few minutes in, I paused the video and looked at him with my jaw dropped. And I was like, have you heard them mention mental health at all? I was stunned. We finished the video and I was slightly relieved that there was a minor mention of mental health resources during the five plus minute video. I heard Chad when he said the district is going to do everything they can. I believe him, but I'm concerned the way that the message came across. The video felt intimidating and threatening. Chad's surrounded by two stone-faced police officers. They say their relationship is important and they're there for students to talk to them, but the officers felt cold. It did not feel like a warm welcome, which is what I would need to feel to open up to someone. And I can't imagine what a kid would need to feel to talk to them as well. The video made me feel like I would not want to talk to them. It felt like the goal of the video was to instill fear and intimidate, which is not a great tactic to use when trying to diffuse a potential threat. The video could have been a great opportunity to introduce the school counselors and therapists to the parents in our community. I spoke to Chad prior to the break and expressed my concern. I feel we had a good conversation and I appreciate his availability to talk to parents. I believe we are all in this together and need to be a strong community. I understand the visit, the video was targeted towards parents, but it made me think back to how stressed out I used to be when I worked in a traditional work setting. I can't imagine many parents would be able to recognize and admit that their child may have the potential to be the next school shooter. The signs are not always so clear, especially when you're talking about someone you love. We're all put in such a tough place. We want to make sure our children have all their needs met. However, based on the reality that most of us live in, having to work to survive, we don't always have the time or capacity to do this. Let's face it, we could all use a helping hand. It's 2022 and we're going into our third year of dealing with the global pandemic. Opioid use is rampant. School shootings are a normal occurrence in our society, yet many of us still have a hesitation to therapy or mental health. I'd love to see the district encourage parents to use the resources we have available, and I'd love to know exactly what those resources are. I feel the schools have been placed in impossible situations over the past few years, and I don't want to bring another complaint to you all and not offer up any solutions. During our call, Chad mentioned it could be a good idea to highlight the district's mental health resources in the next communication. And I personally cannot think of a better way to start the year. I appreciate your time.
Moving on to the superintendent's agenda, agenda, Mr. Lewis, Healthy Aves update.
Thank you, Mr. Ballant. Members of the board community, I just want to give you a quick update on Healthy Aves and you know, really what's been going on really over break and and certainly most recently after break. So as of this morning, these are our numbers. We have 43 students in quarantine and three staff in quarantine. We have 143 students in isolation due to positive COVID cases and 44 staff. So if you look at that at the bottom, we have 186 total students if you add up positive cases and also quarantined students, we have 186 students affected currently with in some way by COVID-19. And I thought, you know, it's important, you know, to look at it in totality of our district with 5,673 students. It's about 3.2% of our students that are either positive or in quarantine. And then our staff numbers, 47 out of 840 with the quarantine and positive cases that are in isolation, you know, roughly about a 5.6% positive or in quarantine. So I will tell you, it's concerning for us from a standpoint of two things. Obviously, we don't want anyone to be sick or ill. We want students in school. This is a slight increase over what we had seen prior to break. But it's not an unexpected increase based on the communications that we've had with families and and the students during our contact tracing of these cases based on, you know, their gatherings and things, events of the holidays. So I wish I could say it was an unexpected trend, but you know, I think it was relatively expected that we would see some positive cases because of that. I did share a picture of the dashboard to the right. I get communication from people that says it is not working, where it's not being updated. Yeah, I I want to make sure it's very clear to our community. We we have nothing to hide. We're always trying to be very transparent with our numbers, but I have to tell you that please give us some grace. You know, when I looked at it this morning, it's it's a couple of days behind. Because we're still contact tracing, we're still trying to update our spreadsheets that it automatically pulls from. And we are, we're tapped. You know, we, we have people that are obviously trying to do their day jobs plus all of this work. And we have the assistance of three sub nurses that are doing a lot of our contact tracing, listening to all the phone calls, contacting families, trying to assist us with that process. And I can tell you, without that team of people, Mrs. Spencer, the school nurses, the assistant principals and principals that are doing all of the conversations, phone calls, contact tracing. It's very taxing on the school team. So please just, you know, think about that before you send an email to one of them saying the dashboard's not updated. This is ridiculous. You know, just think about all the other work that goes into it on the other end. And, you know, if you don't feel like it's been updated or something is malfunctioning with it, absolutely, please get that to us. We'll take a look at it. We work directly with the technology company that helps set that up for us. You know, we want it to be correct and transparent. We're not hiding anything. I can absolutely with 100% certainty say that. If we were hiding things, we certainly wouldn't bring our full numbers as of this morning and post them in a public board meeting. So I really appreciate all those communications, but, you know, please know, we want to be as transparent and get information to you as quick. Excuse me, as quickly as possible. So this is just a building breakdown so that you, you know, it's very hard to see. I can see it because I have it on my computer in front of me, but you can kind of see the trend because of the holidays and how that has caused an increase. And the dark yellow column is just two days, the the first two days following break because the contact tracing, all of the numbers are updated first thing in the morning by Mrs. Spencer and her team. So as of this morning, those were the numbers. She'll update that again, first thing tomorrow morning with her team. And, you know, obviously, we would expect that we'll have some additional positive cases in that line. And again, you know, when you look at what are the events that happened over break, we had obviously holidays and then we had New Year's Eve and bowl games and people I'm sure gathered and had gatherings and were indoors. There were basketball tournaments. There were lots of athletic events. So those things do happen. And and those are things that create exposure. The next slide, I just want you to see it. You're not going to be able to see it very well. In a minute, I'll have a blown up picture of one of the pieces of the slide, but overall, what you can see on this slide is the trend data week to week of how we track our data. And you can kind of see the fluctuation up and down of cases. So early in the fall, you can see that we had 30 plus 30 to 40 students a week that were in the positive category. Pretty low numbers of staff all throughout. But in the fall, we had a lot more students quarantined. You know, 100, 160, 167. You can see some of those numbers in the fall. And then obviously, the quarantine guidelines changed a little bit and we're quarantining less students. And I think a lot of us felt, you know, unnecessarily that they weren't experiencing symptoms and, you know, obviously, they had other protections that they could take and get. And you can see in the middle of October, we dropped down pretty low and and we stayed kind of at a a steady trend throughout November. And, you know, we started having discussions about, you know, are we trending low enough that okay, we we can talk about, you know, going into a recommended encouraged environment or an optional environment without requiring any facial coverings. But we wanted, we knew the holidays were coming. We wanted to see what that data would bring us. And you can see through December, we started to see some increase, but obviously with the holidays, we saw significant increase. So if you go to the next slide, Mr. Fritz, that just blows it up for you. So you can see it a little more clearly the impact of the last few weeks following holidays, you know, Thanksgiving, and then obviously also the winter break. Some of those activities and the numbers, how they have increased. And then the last thing I wanted to share with the board and the community, and and there's a reason, you know, I know that there are a lot of associations that put out letters that, you know, send us letters as school superintendents that say, please follow these guidelines and you know, we, we need you to do this. But they don't, they, they don't look at every single community and say, well, we're step absolutely targeting that at Sycamore. And we made a commitment two years ago at the beginning of this process to always look at Sycamore's data and really focus on what we have going on in Sycamore. Because it's really hard to compare Sycamore to maybe a community on this list that doesn't have a very high vaccination rate. There are still areas in the state that have below 40% vaccination rate. So I recognize that our state leaders, our hospital leaders have to put out, you know, blanket statements to all of our state saying, please do this. You know, but when you look at ours, our Sycamore data and you, you look down the list, you know, we have 45242 that's sitting at 85.86%. And I want to caveat this by saying, this is our adult population. I would absolutely love to share the student population, but it's not available data to us. It is hospital protected. It's privacy protected. We have asked numerous times over the course of the last six months that that data become available because we know it's hard for community members and parents alike to listen to us and say, anecdotally, do we know that our students are getting vaccinated? Yeah, a lot of them will run up to you and show you their Band-Aid and you know, all the different things that happen in schools, but anecdotal data is not something I can say and release and have people buy into. So we would really like to release and have that data, but it's not available to us. So we will keep pushing. We will keep asking. I have another meeting Friday. Every Friday, we have a Hamilton County Superintendent's meeting where we get to talk to the Hamilton County Public Health Commissioner and the doctor that they work with. And I ask every, every meeting because it's important to us. We think we, we really need that. And if you look at 45249, it's the third highest on the list, 77.61%. So our two core zip codes have the hot, two of the three highest on the list. 45040, I thought I saw that pop up on the screen that somebody asked a question, where is that? 45040 is Mason. That's where I used to live. So that's one of the higher ones on the list. But overall, these are the, these are the zip codes that, again, we work collaboratively with our team of dark team members and some of our dark team members are very good about getting this data and being able to pull this data for us. Because we just don't have the extra time to be able to do it. And they pull this data daily for their own jobs or things of that nature. So just so that you have a perspective of where has that data come from and the source is at the bottom. You can go and look at this. It is publicly available, but again, being able to find it and pull it takes time and these people are experts in those areas. So so that's where we're trending right now. You know, we're still, you know, absolutely recommending and encouraging our students to wear a facial covering as a protective measure. I know Mr. Mater has put out several things at the high school. Our junior high has had a higher trend of students wearing facial coverings really since the beginning of the year. And I I have witnessed that and seen that when I've been in the building. I would say our high school anecdotally from Mr. Mater's opinion, watching students come in off the bus this week has been a higher number. So the number that I don't have on here, 45140, I could get it. It is a smaller part of our community. We don't have a huge number of people in Loveland. So obviously, I focused on the two core zip codes and that's why you only see those here. But we do obviously have 45140. We have 4503 or 236 is a small part. And 45241 is on here. I didn't reference it, but it's a small part of our community as well. So any questions from the board about anything that we've shared and?
Yeah, I have a question, Mr. Lewis. So looking at the number, I think it was the first slide that you had up there. You had about 5.6% of teachers that were either in quarantine or were in.
Let me pause you for a second. Not teachers, just all staff.
Oh, all staff.
It is not necessarily all teachers.
Okay, so at what point would you be concerned about not having enough staff to teach and having to go in, excuse me, having to go into some type of virtual mode?
So I will tell you, the first number that concerns me is when we, you know, and I was, we have to look at our transportation staff. If we were to not have enough drivers to drive our routes, that would be a significant concern for being able to transport students to school. Now, other school districts have already run into that this year and they've canceled routes. We're, we're talking about how to contingency plan for that if we were to run into that situation. From a teaching standpoint, you know, right now, the sub pool is pretty taxed. You know, we had a, the other day, we had a 53% fill rate. And that was what you would consider what like might a bad Friday might look like for us. So when that happens, what what happens within our district is we have to pull people from either intervention or ESOL, delivering other services to cover our, our basic classes. As of right now, I think our teams are managing and making it through. I would have to get communication from our buildings, Mrs. Weiss, that they're reaching a point where they can no longer cover or there might be significant issues. I, I still feel like we're fairly far off from having a conversation about any kind of remote environment because it would take a lot more than this. And I told a principal today, I said, if we get in crisis mode, every district office administrator will, will clear their schedule and they'll be teaching instead of going remote. That's how passionately I feel about staying in school. So.
And do you know if the staff, just off, off the top of your head, are they sort of spread throughout our seven buildings or is there one building that's really getting hit hard?
It's pretty spread throughout, but you know, on that same chart, you can actually see a high school staff has. But, you know, again, our high school staff is our largest staff. They have 18 staff members. But again, not all teachers. But again, not all teaching staff. But, you know, we manage with a number of absences every single day. You know, this just adds to and taxes our system a little harder when we're dealing with something like this. So, but we're managing okay at this point.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lewis.
Thank you for the.
Mr. Lewis, I have a question. How, just for clarification, how are we defining a positive case? Are we defining as a doctor administered PCR test, a doctor administered rapid test, an at-home rapid test? Or a parent calling in saying, hey, my kid has symptoms and they were in close contact?
Mrs. Spencer, do you want to come up and talk about our process? Cause I want to take away from your expertise.
We define positive cases by parent report. It could be a rapid test or a PCR test.
Thank you. And then my other question was for the numbers, do Blue Ash and Maple Dale numbers also reflect the preschools in the buildings or is it just K through?
Yep, preschool too.
I have some questions too. Are you able to tell community spread versus school spread with the data? And if so, can you explain that?
At this point, we aren't seeing in-school spread. We're just a couple of days back though from break. The cases that we've seen in terms of spread outside. We have a couple, maybe New Year's Eve parties that some high school students went to. And they were in close contact with each other and are becoming positive. But at this point, we aren't seeing an in-school spread. That doesn't mean we won't potentially, but we aren't seeing it right now.
Is in-school spread also including students who are, say, taking a bus to a sporting event or on a team? Does that count as in-school spread or is it only when they're actually in class or in lunch during the day?
But we look at, we do contact trace for our athletic events as well. So if there is, for example, over the break, junior high team, there was some close contacts there that became positive. So yes, there was some spread there, but it was in a basketball practice. And they were in close, you know, close contact. But it was just a couple of students, but we do monitor that and would count that as in-school spread that we would be concerned about.
Mr. Lewis, I think your team's done a fantastic job for really two years now. And it's, it's hard to believe that we're still doing this on a daily basis, but it's very important to our community and district. What, what can our community expect from a communication standpoint moving forward? Cause we've been very proactive in it to, to date. And I know there's a lot of obviously interest and, and, and hearing from the school district. I know we're updating numbers, I know we're sending emails by building. What, what can they expect from a, from a communication level?
Appreciate the question. So the, the, the communication we sent prior to coming back for break was intentionally scheduled. I didn't want to disrupt people with a school district email while they're trying to celebrate their holidays. So, you know, we scheduled that to come out on Sunday. Actually, our, our district office team and some of our team members met on Sunday just to cover everything. Make sure that we felt like we had things addressed. But for right now, with the heaviness and, and obviously the intensity of what's going on, we're going to do a weekly update that they can expect. And, and really we have always waited. And I think it's a Friday to Thursday reporting. So by Friday, we will be putting something out, whether it just be a smore with updated information. May not always be a video, but sometimes the videos are quick and easy to put together. But, but there'll be a weekly communication right now while the numbers are heavy.
Great, thank you. Any additional questions?
I have one question. Are we seeing a different rate of in-school spread between the high school and junior high versus the elementary schools?
At this point, we aren't seeing a lot of in-school spread like I referenced before. So you don't, the only ones I mentioned were a basketball practice over break. And then, you know, knowledge of a New Year's Eve party that some of our high school students attended. But right now we're not seeing the in-school spread. Again, that doesn't mean it won't happen. This seems to be spreading much quicker than previously. When individuals, especially in a home, in a household are close contacts and becoming positive. You know, certainly there's that spread, but that is something that is not associated with school at this time. But we are closely monitoring that and anticipate because we've returned from a break that we might see that.
Okay, thank you.
Do we provide masks for kids that might not have them and want them?
Yes, we do.
Any additional questions? Thank you very much. I need a motion for the approval of the change orders for Sycamore Junior High Construction Project. Second, Mr. Level.
Yeah, so the big one on here is for the add of the power, add power for the meter pit. This was based on a change of permitting and there was an issue with the scope of the project. So that's why that's before you tonight.
Any questions from the board? Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Mrs. Weiss.
Hi.
Mr. Comifer.
Hi.
Dr. Steger.
Hi.
Mr. Ballant.
Hi.
And Mrs. Bitter.
Hi.
Motion passes. I need a motion for the approval of the change orders for EH Green Intermediate.
So moved.
Second.
There's quite a few on here this evening. The majority, vast majority of them are just kind of standard change of orders that we're bringing to you. But there are two that I want to identify here. The first one is the access control ads for tech rooms. This is a change that we have made based on past experience and understanding how we basically secure our tech room. So we want to move forward and kind of standardize across the district. The other one that you see there, which is rather large, is the revised alternate 16A for the upper courtyard. So at EH Green at the new building, we have two specific courtyards. We have an upper and a lower. The upward, the upper courtyard exists right outside the existing building where the gym is. And it kind of connects the administrative wing to the new cafeteria. It's a little bit larger space and the original alternate was, we have it listed here, $162,000. We were faced with the challenge of trying to figure out what to do with that space. And that was at a critical decision point and a timing issue. Because in order to get in there and develop that space, it has to be done right now. Or it's going to be much more difficult to get the equipment through the building as they finish up the existing concrete work, drywall, that kind of stuff. So what we did was we went back to the table. We scaled that back as much as we can, knowing that we can build that out through the support of whether it's the PTOs or other funds in the future. So this is going to get us to a really good point that that space is developed enough that we can envision what we want that to be in the future. And we work directly with the administration at EHD to get that happen, get that done.
Mr. Level, are we still within budget for green?
We are, we, we, as Mrs. Weber looks at me over there, we are. As, as you all know, EH Green is our tightest budget due to the soil remediation that we had to do there and other issues. We also know upcoming with that project, the demolition of the old building, you know, there are a lot of costs. So we continue to work very closely with the treasures department, with our team at SHP and the contractors to ensure that the decisions we are making are going to be in the best situation possible in the end. But it is tight, I will tell you that, it is tight.
Thank you.
But I also want to remind everybody that this is an overall project.
Yes, sir.
For a total amount. And if we need contingency from other buildings, we can move it towards EH Green if we need to.
Absolutely, right. And there are other items such as soft costs that we've talked about previously as well, that start to get released as the project comes to a close, which helps shore up that contingency with each of our projects. But Mr. Ballant, to your point, we do want to look at this project holistically across the district. At the same rate, what we want to do is we want to honor those projects within that scope of that building as well. So it's, it's a delicate dance, but what we try to do is best we can is obviously be the best fiscal stewards of the tax dollars that we can.
Any additional questions? Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Mrs. Weiss.
Hi.
Dr. Steger.
Hi.
Mr. Ballant.
Hi.
Mrs. Bitter.
Hi.
And Mr. Comifer.
Hi.
Motion passes, continuing with our theme. I need a motion for the approval of the construction change order directive, EH Green Intermediate Construction Project.
So moved.
Second.
This is a result of a change of an alternate that we accepted as it related to some doors that we're putting in that space, EH Green. And so this is to help reinforce some of that steel. We knew that this would be part of that larger project that we needed to do.
Any questions from the board? Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Mrs. Weiss.
Hi.
Dr. Steger.
Hi.
Mr. Ballant.
Hi.
Mrs. Bitter.
Hi.
And Mr. Comifer.
Hi.
Motion passes. I need a motion to approve the authorization to advertise for bids for EH Green Intermediate Loose Furnishings.
So moved. Second.
This is just standard practice. We're getting ready to put out the bids for the furniture package for EH Green. We'll be at this exact same point next year when we start looking at the junior high.
It's pretty exciting that we're to the point of actually buying furniture for the, for the new buildings, so.
It's very exciting. It was, it was a very fun experience to be able to sit in the room with the team at EH Green and look at the flooring samples, look at the furniture that they're going to be bidding out. It just, it becomes very real. So looking forward to that package, getting out there and seeing what we can do for the school.
Any questions from the board? Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Dr. Steger.
Hi.
Mrs. Bitter.
Hi.
Mr. Ballant.
Hi.
Mr. Comifer.
Hi.
Mrs. Weiss.
Hi.
Motion passes. And I need a motion for the improvement of the agreement with Educational Services Center, Central Ohio.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Lewis, any comments on this one?
No, just obviously, you know, we have a, some need to provide some additional support. And for us, Blue Ash was working through a process. Oh, Mrs. Spencer's going to come up and save me, but Blue Ash has been working through a process with a redesign and a redevelopment. And now this Mrs. Spencer's up here, I won't steal her thunder because she's been helping leading it, so.
So this is for some consultation services to help support the redesign and redevelopment of some programming for students with autism that are currently at Blue Ash Elementary.
Any questions from the board? Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Mrs. Weiss.
Hi.
Dr. Steger.
Hi.
Mrs. Bitter.
Hi.
Mr. Comifer.
Hi.
Mr. Ballant.
Hi, motion passes. Mr. Lewis, any other?
Just a couple of quick other items. And I will apologize, I forgot to mention one thing during healthy AIDS that might be of interest to people in the community. Cause the CDC put out new guidance around, you know, quarantines and, and different things of that nature. ODH has now come out in support of those guidelines. But as I've talked with Mrs. Spencer and our team, and you've heard me talk about how taxing the process already is, the new guidelines would only add to the taxation of our team. With the potential of, of if they're positive, they can stay out for five days, then come back. As long as they mask up for five days, it would be a logistical nightmare for us. So instead of jumping in right away, we're going to take a step back and say, hey, this is working for us right now. It is working for our families and our teams, we're, we're able to manage. We're going to really analyze what those guidelines are, see how it would impact our team and take our time in implementation. Hamilton County has not come out officially and said they're adopting them and that's who we follow. But we will eventually work with Hamilton County to implement those guidelines. So if that was a question that comes up, I wanted to address that. The other couple of items, just a couple of quick updates, technology staffing. I know that Mr. Fritz came to you at the retreat in November and, and we talked, or in October, and we talked a little bit about moving a staff member and, and, and making that happen. And we are working towards making that happen. If it already hasn't already happened, I think I've seen Mr. Goodermuth more in the last month than I've seen him before being out in the buildings. But he is working collaboratively with Mr. Fritz, trying to help pick up some of that slack that needs to be picked up for Mr. Fritz. On the other side of that, we obviously have a, a gap that we have existing in the curriculum department. And with the curriculum review that you all have been aware of, there's going to be a lot of work and heavy lifting. So at some point, we're, we're going to be coming back to you to talk about not only the restructuring of those positions, but probably a name change, a new job description that really accurately reflects what we need out of those positions. So more to come on that. Pretty exciting, Sycamore High School was recognized for youth at the booth. We had the most participation and we were recognized by Hamilton County Board of Elections for having the highest participation of high school students on election day. So I thought that was really cool. So it's great. And, you know, it, what was even more really cool about it is that our city manager of Montgomery was the one that sent it to us. I had not seen it, it was on Twitter and he said, hey, be proud. And he sent it to us and I thought, how cool is that, that our city manager picked up on that? And that just shows the positive relationships we have with our municipalities. Preschool registration has kicked off. It runs through February 11th, which, you know, amongst all the other things that we have to do, we also have to talk about preschool and, you know, we, we committed during this bond issue to expand preschool options and make those available. And we talked about Sims and Blue Ash. So Maple Dale's a little crowded, we need to give them some space. So it's funny how everything comes full circle. Preschool was at Sims and Blue Ash when I first started in the district. So we're back to that. And kindergarten registration opens on January 17th. So really exciting, always good to start seeing those young people get registered for school. So that's all I have.
Mr. Lewis, do you know what year the incoming kindergartners will graduate?
Oh, gosh.
You don't have to do the math fast, I was just, that's always.
I, here's, here's what I know, my fourth grader is 2030. So.
Oh, my gosh, okay, that's all I need to know.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lewis. I need to, moving on to the treasures agenda, I need a motion for the approval of the 2022 IRS mileage rate. So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Mr. Comifer.
Hi.
Mrs. Bitter.
Hi.
Dr. Steger.
Hi.
Mrs. Weiss.
Hi.
Mr. Ballant.
Hi, motion passes. I need a motion for the approval of the personnel consent agenda, which includes the addendum item number one, E, F, G, and H, three, A, B, C, D, and four, A.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Mrs. Weiss.
Hi.
Mr. Comifer.
Hi.
Dr. Steger.
Hi.
Mr. Ballant.
Hi.
And Mrs. Bitter.
Hi.
Motion passes. Any other board of education business? The only thing I will add is I know that Dr. Stegers and Mrs. Bitter are going to be attending the OSB new board member training this weekend. So good luck with that and definitely look forward to anything that you learn from there shared with the rest of the board. I need a motion to go into the executive session per O R C 121 dot 22G1, employment evaluation of a public employee, official or regulated individual, and O R C 121 dot 22G2, purchase of a property.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Mrs. Weiss.
Hi.
Mr. Comifer.
Hi.
Mr. Ballant.
Hi.
Mrs. Bitter.
Hi.
And Dr. Steger.
Hi.
Motion passes, we will not have a vote. So thank you to everyone who attended. Thank you.